We're introducing your meeting for Tuesday, October 26th. Pursuant to the July 17, 2021 order from the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health, face masks must be worn in all persons regardless of vaccination status while in the council chambers. There will be a designated area in the lobby to accommodate members of the public who do not wish to be seated in the council chambers and the desire to remain masked and socially distanced regardless of vaccination status. Temporary accommodation due to COVID. As a standing accommodation to ensure participation of those with sensitive and other risk conditions, the city will offer a nearby alternate location where individuals who desire to participate in the council meeting and would desire to wear masks, maintain six feet of social distancing, and enjoy that those around them are also of similar protective regardless of vaccination status may watch the meeting. Such individuals will be allowed to remain in that area only if they comply with these requirements. To participate in oral communication, such individuals will be called, can proceed to this public speaking podium to address the city council, and are able to return to the fully masked and socially distancing location with minimal exposure to any unmasked individuals. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our presentation tonight is the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Brad, would you like to make the introduction, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we welcome Los Angeles County Sheriff Alex Vela Nueva. He's here tonight to present on public safety issues in San Dimas area, including but not limited to the district attorney, prosecution, homelessness, crime, and Los Angeles sheriff operations. So with that, I'm happy to introduce the sheriff. If you'd like to come up, sheriff?
It's good to be back home for one of my first places. I lived in California, San Dimas, twice, back in 1987, then I returned in 92. It's great to be back. There's a lot going on countywide and things that impact San Dimas in particular I'd like to talk about. One of them, and this is true across the county, is going to be the issue of homelessness. And that you're being impacted by homeless in a marginal way in comparison to other communities throughout LA County, particularly in South LA, the beach communities, the tourist destinations, Skid Row, Old Vera Street, and all that. Less, however, you're starting to feel the pinch. What's going to happen, though, as eviction moratoriums start expiring across the nation, we are the destination of a choice for the entire nation for homeless. Twenty-five percent of all the nation's homeless are currently now in LA County. That's in excess of 80,000. We have half of the entire state's homeless population is in LA County. So as you can see, we're going to have to brace ourselves because the problem is only going to get bigger. The current position of the board of supervisors in the city of LA, and unfortunately, the government itself, their position is one where they do not want to regulate public space. They believe that they can build their way out of the homeless situation by creating more permanent housing. And over the last 10 years, from 2011 to 2021, the homeless population grew by more than 100% from 39,000 to over 80,000. And in the same timeframe, they spent $6.5 billion in homeless initiatives. So the trend is not a good trend, particularly because they're not addressing the fact on the ground. They were creating environment that is welcoming for the nation's homeless to come to California for the great weather, the great benefits, and a shot at the half a million dollar condo with a beach view or ocean view. That is not good. And it's a dynamic problem, but they're trying to apply static solutions to it. That's why they will never, ever wrap their arms around the size of the problem, start addressing it. We have to provide an increase in capacity to treat people with or suffering from mental illness and those with drug addiction issues. That is 70% of the homeless population, 70%. Some of them have both issues. Some with a drug addiction now have mental issues because they've literally fried their brains, and now you're having both issues at the same time. And that residential treatment capacity is just not there. I have an entire empty jail, not jails, of hospital facilities. The old LA County USC Medical Center sits vacant. St. Vincent Medical Center sits vacant. And a lot of the capacity, Metro Hospital in Norwalk, for example, reduced capacity. A lot of facilities that are empty, they're not being used to their full capacity. And that is by design or by indifference from the state, the county, and the city of LA. But ultimately, communities like San Dimas are going to pay their price down the road because the problem is going to start mushrooming out to all the surrounding suburban communities. And we're seeing that already, little by little. It's a steady influx. It's not going to stop. We have our homeless outreach service team, which is doing an incredible job out there with very limited resources. We initiated the process to clean up Venice Beach. We're working in San Vicente in front of the VA Center in Brentwood. That process is going well. We're going to go to Old Vera Street and try to reclaim Old Vera Street. And however, our limitation is always resources. We do not have the resources of the city of LA. We have 0.9 deputies per 1,000 residents. That is the most understaffed law enforcement agency in the entire nation. The national average is 2.5. For metropolitan areas, it's 3.8 residents or cops per resident. NYPD has over four. LAPD is 2.2, and we're trying to make things work with 0.9 while we're being defunded. So you can see, this is going to be problematic as we're trying to deliver law enforcement services, and we don't have the actual human staffing to make that happen. Compounding the problem is our district attorney. The first six months of his time in office, he rejected 5,932 cases, rejected specifically based on his special orders from the day he took office. These are not rejected cases because something was missing, or all the elements of the crime were not there, you know, things like that. No. These are in addition to all that. And that means those are cases that we responded to, might have been code three, emergency call, priority calls. We identified a suspect, a victim, met all the elements of the crime. The investigator went through the whole case, interviewed all the victims, got everything wrapped together, package delivered to the DA, and they said, nope. Which means a lot of people are not being held accountable for the crimes they are committing. We have an issue with theft, and this is something I've been reading, the crime reports here, is one of the biggest concerns in your Part I crimes is theft, larceny. The DA has legalized theft in LA County by his actions. He is not prosecuting any type of petty theft at all. The business committee is aware of this, and you're seeing the videos. They're kind of viral YouTube sensations. I call them Gascon shoppers. They go into TJ Maxx, grab the entire rack of clothing, and just walk out. They don't even bother running out anymore, like hiding one thing and running. Now, they just walk in brazenly, grab the whole rack, and just walk out. I have friends in the restaurant business, they'll lose thousands of dollars a night. We'll have a whole table of eight, you know, a tab of 800, 900 bucks. They just laugh and walk out. It's no longer dine and dash, it's dine and, I guess, saunter out because they know they're not facing a prosecution from the DA. So he's legalized theft. He's legalized prostitution in LA County. I don't know if people are aware of this, or you don't recall him campaigning on this. But we've done reverse stings. In fact, a place near and dear to San Dimas, Pomona, which has a problem with a red light issue I am sure you're all familiar with, on Holt. And we've presented hundreds of cases of Johns and reverse stings, and he's rejected every single one based on this special directive. So now you have a problem with human trafficking is going to start spiraling out of control because there's no one holding people accountable. We're doing our end of the bargain in terms of arresting, investigating, presenting the case, but we cannot force the DA to prosecute what he does not want to prosecute. And he's ordering his deputies not to prosecute, which is the biggest, most troubling aspect. We know every individual filing DA historically exercised their own prosecutorial discretion, which is fine, which is what the law allows for. But he's using his position to basically dictate what the entire agency does. That was if I, as sheriff, told all my deputies, you're not going to arrest all these type of people. I don't care if the crime was committed, you had any of your presence, or if it's felony, not in your presence. You have all the elements of the crime. You have the victim, you got the suspect. Don't arrest them because it's going to make us safer. That's his spiel. It's not, not at all. It's actually making us more dangerous because there's a lack of consequences. The criminal community, criminal enterprises understand this lack of consequences, and they're emboldened. And that's why you see things more and more brazen, broad daylight, people doing takeover robberies. You saw the videos in Beverly Hills Outdoor Cafe, guys just show up and just grab a guy's watch and shoot another patron in the restaurant like, no, no big deal. So these are troubling trends, and I just want you to be aware of it and use your influence and use your position of authority and your representation of your community to the best of your abilities to push back against this false narrative that is very dangerous. Can we reform elements of the criminal justice system? Of course we can. But we have to reform it, not dismantle it. There's a difference between the two. And could you add about what we're doing locally for the crime prevention?
Good afternoon, Captain Ash Raphnia, San Dimas Sheriff's Station. With our larcenies, as the sheriff says, 65% of all the crimes that are occurring in the city of San Dimas are theft-related or are larcenies. As the sheriff indicated, the last time we presented a report here with the council as it relates to Mr. Gascon, he had 184 cases from San Dimas that were rejected based on his different directives. And majority of those are theft-related also. So the way we combat larcenies is twofold. Fold number one is we educate our community members by educating them, the nine o'clock routine through community meetings. We try to tell them to, for example, get their belongings out of the vehicles, you know, do a nine o'clock routine, take things out of the vehicles, lock things up, turn on lights. At the same time, we have our crime analysts identify areas where majority of these incidents are occurring, at which time we do directed patrols and directed enforcement. So it's a twofold education and enforcement.
Any questions? Be happy to entertain them.
Well, I have a question. What type of cases is the district attorney going after? What's his priority?
His priority, from what we've seen to date, is to prosecute cops. Because he's putting, adding all of his resources to Justice System Integrity Division. And trust me, there's nothing wrong with prosecuting cops that are out of line, you know, when sideways on us, we need to hold them accountable. However, if that's his entire agenda, and he dismantled our hardcore gang division that investigates all the gang-related homicides, he's ordered his deputy DAs not to do body attachments and compel victim statements or victim testimony, and now witness testimony. So when you have gang-related crimes, they're reluctant to come to court in the first place. And a lot of times, the deputy DAs use that power, that body attachment subpoena, to persuade reluctant people to show up to court to hold the gangsters accountable who are busy killing, robbing, raping, pillaging the community. And armed with that information that he's not going to force their hand, that's only going to actually embolden and empower the hands of criminal gangs because now they can continue their extortion rackets, their murder-for-hire, and all the different things they engage in with very little repercussion. So that is extremely dangerous, and that threatens everyone's safety. And as you can see, just by his actions, what he's dismantling. There's another unit called the Crimes Against Peace Officers. He hasn't dismantled that one yet. However, he's replaced a lot of seasoned deputy district attorneys in leadership positions with public defender's office. And I'm going to read you something that's going to kind of take you aback. You may be familiar with this already. And he has a rank, it's called Director, which is kind of like our division chiefs for our department. In fact, Corrine Jacob, where are you? She's one of 12 divisions chiefs in our department. It's a very, it's a senior rank, it's an at-will rank. And this person was hired, and they said that, I've said it before and I'll say it again, unless someone is about to die or suffer serious bodily injury, don't call the police on black people. And it goes off on there about not calling the police for anything, so, which is horrific for the African-American community because what about all the other crimes involved? What about domestic violence, child abuse, and all these other things happen? This person has encouraged him not to call law enforcement, and they're a leader in the prosecution of crime. And it's just bizarre, and that's what's going on right now with the DA's office. They're so far off the rails, I don't even know where to describe it.
Isn't he getting a lot of pushback from some of his lieutenants?
Yes. The Association of Deputy District Attorneys had a successful lawsuit where he was enjoined from doing certain activities and enforcing his special directives. Are there ones, they're still in place, those directives? And there's a multiple lawsuits now for retaliation against some of the people he demoted or the people that spoke out against him. And that's, the whole organization now is in disarray because of what he's done. Because these were, you can campaign for a job, and you can say, I'm a reformer, but when you take the title, you have to have a collaborative effort with all the stakeholders involved to really move the needle and get buy-in from all the people going to be impacted by decisions. But he showed up like, thought he was Moses with, you know, the tablets came down from the mountain, said, this is it, take it or take it. And that's, that's his mistake right there, catastrophic mistake, because he did not have buy-in, and a lot of his things have very serious problems because they're not based on actual facts. They're based on an agenda, an ideological agenda, that does not have the facts that support them.
Thank you. Sheriff, one, thank you for being here tonight. There's a couple things the community here in preparation hearing that you were attending had shared. So two, and number one is, could you talk a little bit about CCWs? I think the community here, in light of the concerns regarding crime, is interested in knowing what that process is, how that's going, and if they're still able to get a CCW. And then number two is, I happen to have heard about a special alert launch that the department listed. There's many people in the community with people who have intellectual, physical, or developmental disabilities, and they might be interested in that as well.
Very good. On the CCW front, we doubled the size of the staff. We took the standard, good cost standard that all previous sheriffs used, but it was an unattainable standard, really. It was almost impossible, unless you were a judge or some big wig of some kind. And I think my predecessor approved like 194 in four years. The one before him, Baca's tenure, his entire time in office, I don't think he crossed 300. To date, I've done over 1,600 CCWs, and I have about 300 that are waiting, they're going through the process. We've taken in over 6,000 applications, so we've been kind of, we've been harmed by our success in terms of CCW because now everybody's just flooding the system. Every day, we receive a box this high with applications of CCWs. So we're working our way, we're trying to digitize it to make it more user-friendly, and everything can be done online, there's no paperwork involved at all. However, we have no financial support from the county to do that, so we have to do everything, we have to carve out from our own budget. So we have a business process expert who happens to be a deputy who's working hard to make it all online, and that'll pick up the pace on these. Right now, it takes us about three to four months to do one. Some of the wait is just waiting for the DOJ return on the live scan. But the program's successful. All we ask for, obviously, you have good moral character, no felony convictions, all these things, and go through the training, is you have to establish the good cause. It has to be greater than, well, I'm in LA and I'm afraid. That's not good cause. Something specific to you that would lead you, one, to be afraid for your safety, and two, I can trust you in that situation, be armed in public. So got to satisfy that. A lot of jobs qualify that. And for example, if you have a business, you do cash deposits at night, that's a pretty easy one because you're subject to being a victim of a robbery when the bad guys figure out what you do. So we're empowering people so they can defend themselves because we can't be with them 24/7. So things like that. And so that's working well. On the second front, on the special alert system, it's going online pretty soon. We've done all the, all the steps to put it together, and what it is, our 911 system, our computer aided dispatch, it's very antiquated. It dates back to the 1970s when actually 64 characters and all that fields and the cars, you put them in a machine, literally, that's, technology is still alive today in computer aided dispatch because we've never had the resources to convert to something better, faster, better, and cheaper. But there are a lot of workarounds. But one of them is, we have a field in the 911 system where we can enter information from an from an address. So you call 911 from that phone number, and the information will pop up, not just the address, but information about something at the place. Used to be a hazardous situation, or hazardous materials, or something of note. Now we can input a special alert. So if you have a family member who is developmentally disabled, autistic, any type of a special need that would be useful for law enforcement to know when we're rolling Code 3, or hair on fire, and some emergency is happening, that information empowers us and realize, okay. For example, most common case is a male adult, appearing adult, large, could be threatening, could be doing some activity that most people perceive is, yeah, that's dangerous, but if he has a mind of a two-year-old, we have to look at it in a whole different light. And when we arm the deputies with that information, we're really improving the situation, making sure the outcome is one that is, everyone is going to be safe, we slow the situation down, we're now having, any call that goes out for a mental, a mental health issue or crisis of any time, of any type, the watch sergeant has to go to the dispatch center, has to make sure that the deputy's entire buffer of all the calls for service are cleared, so they only have one call in that call. And that watch sergeant has to ensure that the mental evaluation team shows up, or is responding to that call as well. So we're actually slowing everything down, giving the best possible outcome. And time is on our side when we do that. And when we know what we're walking into, we don't have a deputy who's got, you know, multiple calls for service, priority calls, and he shows up, and there's a guy screaming at him, he's six foot five and 300 pounds with a full beard, and trying to yank his gun away. And when he knows who that person is, it's a little different. And that information is going to save lives. So this is a very, very good program, and we encourage everyone who has any family member of concern, that it could be perceived as a threat in any way, or needs some special care, to put themselves in the special alert system. So you pick up and you call 911, we know the whole story right away.
Thank you, Sheriff. Well, thanks a lot, Sheriff, for being here. I really appreciate you coming out. And I like hearing about that system, that's, and I like, that's one of the improvements, I think, that is really important, like you're saying. I liked your phrase, "reform, not dismantle," and that's, I think, very important for the sheriff's department. In your time, and this is one example you just told us about that was a highlight, can you tell us one or two other highlights of the time you've been in office? There's a lot of things that are troubling, and you've got a lot to deal with, but how about some of the things that make you feel good?
Well, we got the body-worn camera up and running now. Every single patrol station is equipped, every single deputy in the field is equipped. Now we're going down to the secondary units that are not patrolled, but they're in uniform out in the field, they're also getting the body-worn cameras. And we're doing an experiment with the body-worn cameras in the jail, too. We'll be one of the very first units in the entire nation that has body-worn cameras in the jail. So this is about transparency and about accountability. We redid the entire website of the department, lsd.org. We have a transparency tab, so a lot of information people have never seen before. You can go straight to the website, click on the transparency tab, you can read all about our disciplinary efforts, you can read all about our, all of our manuals of policies and procedures, every single thing that governs how we do our job on the department is now available for people to read online, gives you more information. Same thing with deputy-involved shootings. They're tragedies, no matter how you slice or dice it, and we provide all the information, we provide the footage of the body-worn cameras, the opinion of the district attorney when they finally get off their rear ends and publish it. We put that information online as well, we give a description of everything that happened, radio traffic, for example. So when you read through it, you read the summary, the description, and all the supporting documentation, you walk away with, "Okay, I can see what happened." Now remember, we recruit from the human race, and we're going to make decisions, they're not going to be perfect, we're not robots. So people are going to take exception to decisions that were made. If it appears that somebody did something wrong, violation of policy, they get investigated administratively. We also present every case to the DA's office, the Justice System Integrity Division, and we publish their findings. They take a long time, but we, when they finally get it, we put it there. We also put a link to the coroner's report, so anyone can arm themselves with all the information in every case. This is very brand-new stuff. 1421, the Public Records Act, and the new laws on police records, peace officer records, all that information is available online. We have dashboards where you can measure how we're doing on all these different parameters. So this has been very successful. Another of the things we did is we stopped all out-of-state recruitment, we're only hiring locally, LA County. And the nature of the department, our diversity now, we're probably the most diverse large agency in the entire nation. And when it comes to breaking glass ceilings, we've shattered all of them. Right now, six of our 12 division chiefs are female. And that is more female division chiefs than all the previous sheriffs combined, and they're all serving at the same time. So we're definitely moved the needle immensely towards diversity, towards equal opportunity. We dismantled the good old boy system in the past, it really was not serving the community well, or the department well. So these are things that we've really advanced. The promotional process, he got the job because he won it hard, fair, and square. And he had to go through a lengthy process, he had to meet multiple, he had to have the 10 years of patrol experience at different ranks, he had to have the education component, he had to interview with the undersheriff and the assistant sheriffs, be one of the semifinalists, and then after that, he interviews one of the finalists, and you folks make the decision. And that's why he's the unit commander of the station, or your chief of police. And that process now is brand-new for the organization, and I'm putting that in your hands, because I want him to be a reflection of where you want your city to go in terms of law enforcement services. And these are all major advancements. I mean, I campaigned on reform, rebuild, restore, and we've been doing exactly that all along.
Well, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. And yeah, I think there's a lot of good things you've done, so I just wanted to hear some of that, along with the challenges that you have.
On Sunday, we went to Ohio, we received an award from the American Jail Association because of our initiatives on combating the COVID-19 in the jails. We have the nation's largest jail system, so we were like a sitting duck when a pandemic comes around. So we had to figure out quickly, how do we combat this? And we found a way to depopulate the jails temporarily, 5,000, went from 17,000 to 12,000, and isolate, quarantine, rapid deployment of medical services, doing early testing when they came in to segregate them, all these things we did. And then we took initiatives with the employees, even the inmates themselves, doing up their own artwork about the importance of getting tested, wearing masks. We had the CRDF, the female jail, they were, they sewed over 30,000 masks, so every inmate had two masks at their disposition. So all these things led to, it was safer, more than twice as safe to be inside the county jail than it was to be in the community outside, which drove some people nuts, because they could not believe that. But we lost 13 inmates, which sounds a lot, but when you consider it was 110,000 inmates that went through the system, you realize, you lost more residents than San Dimas. And that's three times the size of the population of your city. So what we did worked, and it was a lot of hard work from a lot of people.
Good job, thanks.
Eric?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for all of the work that you're doing. I think it's a breath of fresh air for a lot of people, specifically in our community. And it is particularly important to us, because not only are you the sheriff of our county, but you provide our police services here at home. So everything that you're doing makes a difference here, probably before many other places. And it hasn't gone unnoticed, and we're very appreciative. So thanks for coming out, and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for doing the right thing for this community. But I really want to articulate the fact that we are so fortunate that we have the deputies that are assigned to San Dimas, the leadership that has, it's fabulous. Everyone, I never hear anybody say anything bad. And, you know, there's always a naysayer or something like that, but the majority of this community trusts them, believe in them, and I think that that says a lot and comes from the very top. I've known two or three of your predecessors, so I know where some of the problems exist, and I've had that opportunity. But I'd like you to just, I know the answer to this, but I'd like you to give me, to give us a reality. There are people out there who say, "I won't call the sheriffs." And I don't want, there's no reason to do it, because the DA is not going to file a case anyway. So they're reluctant to call, because, you know, they just, they're saying why. So could you just address the fact that it doesn't really matter what the DA is going to do? In most cases, we're going to do the right thing as far as putting people in jail?
Very good question. And I've told the entire department in every single briefing I go to, is do not use excuse to someone else refusing to do their job for you to not do your job. Get the job done, let them worry about doing their job. So we hold everyone accountable, we respond to calls, we write those reports, we take the bad guys to jail, and if the district attorney lets them out or refuses to prosecute, we're keeping tabs, and we're building our casework. And all this information now is going to, it'll be provided to everyone, full transparency, so everyone can make informed decisions on the future of the district attorney and his efforts. So definitely, it is a challenging, because some people think, "Man, I'm just wasting my time." But I say, "No, don't. Report everything." And the sad thing is, is some people within the DA's office, or some of the people that believe that he's doing the right thing, they'll say, "Oh, we see a drop in reported theft, it must be working," when it's actually the opposite. People are just giving up on reporting. So we have to keep that in mind, that the information now is not as good, because people are withdrawing, even just calling us, so we don't even know about crimes that are happening. But we got to keep encouraging everyone, "Please, report everything, we need to document everything." And we're documenting failure, literally is what we're doing, the failure of George Gascon's efforts. And if we don't document it, then they'll celebrate it as a success, and we can't allow that. We need to have fact-driven decisions. And for our department, and I'm pushing every single deputy, keep serving the community with pride, keep with that can-do attitude, no matter what the obstacles we face. And so you'll see the deputies out there making those arrests, and we're measuring our arrests, they're still pretty consistent. We haven't seen a big nosedive in arrests at all, so we're, the deputies embracing that concept.
Appreciate that. Haven't seen you several nights in a row on television and the late-night news. I'm quite sure that your wife would be great if you got home for dinner. So I think, unless anyone else has a question? Captain?
Sheriff, again, thank you for coming down and talking to the community. A couple of community members asked me for you to speak on closing down the Men's Central Jail by the board, and how it's going to affect housing, the population of inmates.
We're, that's another really, really bad decision from the Board of Supervisors that we're fighting against. We need to rebuild Men's Central Jail and convert it into Mental Health Treatment Center. The board turned it down and paid an $80 million fine, on top of, I don't know how many tens of millions they spent in architectural designs and engineering drawings, and 10 years of planning, and they just walked away from it in one day, because they thought it was a woke thing to do. And there is no substitute for 4,500 beds that are high-security. We need to have those beds. So I'm pushing against that, because if we have to drop our population to allow 4,500 inmates to be released, there's no low-hanging fruit left. Every single people who's left in our county jails right now is in there for a serious or violent crime, or both. And you see reports, and they'll very dishonestly say, "Oh, this person was arrested for driving on a suspended license," and they're in jail for that. Because the AAGES system, Automated Justice and Information System, right, if that's what it's called, AAGES, it only counts your arresting charge. But if you have a triple warrant for murder from Texas, it's not going to say that. You're arrested on a ticket or something. That's all that it counts for. So every single report to these people, the RAND Corporation is relying on, is bad information that does not reflect the nature of every single person in there. We have 15,000 inmates, I have less than 1,000 that are on misdemeanors, and they're all sentenced. Or they're incompetent to stand trial, and I cannot find a bed to house these people. That's left. So all I have left is 14,000 felons, I have 1,200 murder suspects alone in the county jail. That's greater than the entire population of most nations' jails, and that's just one charge of murder. So, you know, Men's Central Jail cannot close, that's a really, really bad idea. And the fact that the board keeps pushing it, and they're setting aside $40 million, they even have a jail closure implementation team, but I'm still holding the keys. And we're not going to close it.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Sheriff, thank you very much for taking the time to come out and visit with us. You're more than welcome to come anytime you want, and we'll make time, we'll make room. Thank you.
Well, thank you all, you're very kind of for the time you've offered me, and I thank you for everything you're doing in support of the community, and the deputies are working for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce our Administrative Services Director, Michael O'Brien, who's going to introduce our two new city employees, Cynthia Todd and Jonathan Marin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. Back in April of 2021, you guys approved a reorganization of the Administrative Services Department, which allowed us to bring on these two employees, and we're very happy and grateful for that approval, because they're going to be very beneficial to the department to the city. The first one, Cecilia Todd, who's going to be our Senior Human Resources Analyst. She has over 15 years of experience in human resources, working with full-service cities such as Arcadia and Glendora, Arcadia being the position she just came from, or the city she just came from, overseeing recruiting, employee benefits, salary surveys, compliance with state and federal laws, the evaluation process, workers' compensation, and a variety of additional human resources and risk management functions. So I'd like to thank her, and have her come up and say hello.
Hello, I'm really excited to be working now for the city of San Dimas. Nice to meet you all.
And nice to meet you. Welcome.
And then along with Cecilia, we have Jonathan. He comes from us from a private entity consulting firm named Aurelio Associates that specializes in working with the public sector for GIS mapping, survey engagements, virtual events, and notification tools. Jonathan also worked for the city of Bolden Park from their planning department. So we believe Cecilia and Jonathan will bring a lot of experience and expertise in the areas of human resources and IS GIS, that'll help our organization reach the next level of support and customer service for not only residents, but our internal staff as well. So I'd like Jonathan to come up and just introduce himself and say hello.
Hello, I'm very excited to be here, and excited to move the GIS department forward.
Thank you. Rural Communications, members of the audience are, I heard something. Okay. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each individual item, agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussions on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff and set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, the first speaker is Amanda Lee, speaking on safety.
Hi.
All right. So I'm actually rushed here after attending the Gold Line meeting. That was kind of conflicting with a lot of other things that were going on. And I just wanted to come make a public comment, just sharing with you that almost everybody except for a commissioner that's here commented opposed to the moving of the parking lot, which I think the city is already well aware of, because a lot of residents have been opposed to that since it came up. But something that caught my attention was that residents are feeling like the city is not being transparent with them whatsoever. They felt that this was just sprung upon them, the 11th-hour thing, when indeed, all of this has been discussed for 10 years now. So I just wanted to share with you that it's not me necessarily, but other residents that live close to the new proposed lot, that are just feeling like the city is ignoring them, they're, you know, not listening to their concerns at all. You say you're listening, but then you do something completely different. So I just wanted to mention that because that was really the biggest takeaway, and I think you guys are going to have an uphill battle with construction authority over it because that's all they're hearing, is residents saying, "Hey, we're being railroaded by this, and the city's not listening to us. We hope that you hear from us our concerns because the city isn't seemingly telling you guys about our concern." I also wanted to mention and ask about an update on the commissioner training that you guys had brought up months back in regards to training commissioners about their, what they are doing, public comments, or when they are posting on social media. Because I remember attending those meetings, and I remember listening to those meetings, and the details that were brought up were very precise. The examples brought up were very concise. And yet, tonight, there was a commissioner that commented and did not explicitly state, "I'm not commenting on behalf of the city." I thought that was one of the rules, right? No? Okay. So I wanted to bring that up because I think that's important. If you guys are going to pass these stringent rules, we need to be following up on those. Another thing I wanted to bring up is just my disappointment with the maps. I know, I believe it's online, but it's, at this point, again, we're back to the 11th hour. There's that transparency thing, right? So again, it just seemed quite obvious that residents, including myself, are feeling freeze-out by the city. Our voices are being silenced. Our activities and interactions with the city are being limited and hampered. We really don't have a way to get our voices heard, and we're being told, "I hear you." And then the actions go the complete opposite direction. So I just wanted to share that with you in hopes that you can hear us on that. Okay? Have a good night.
Thank you.
Nora Chin with the San Dimas Library.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. And tonight, I would like to give you an update on the status of the library closure. Unfortunately, due to major supply chain delays, the closure of the library may be extended to January 2022. Okay? I know it's very disappointing to experience the library closure, but the county is working very hard to provide a safe and comfortable library for the community. I really apologize for the inconvenience this has been already caused to the community. In the meantime, the customers or residents can use the LaVrenne Library to, for library service. They can pick up hosts there, and they can, if they have questions, they can call the LaVrenne Library. If you need to check the books, we do have a lot of the e-collections online, and you are welcome to download the ebooks. And hopefully, next time when I'm here, that I will give you the good news that you reopen the library. So I'm sorry for that, and I have nothing to do with that.
Nora, before you leave, do you have anything else you wanted to tell us about?
Hmm?
Is there anything else you wanted to tell us about before I ask a question, or?
No, that's it.
So not really a question, but I wanted to mention that it's the Overdrive application, I believe, that provides the audiobooks.
Yes.
Is that right? And I, and I got to tell you that, that you can download those books, and they expire like a library book does, but, you know, my wife has downloaded a number of those. And if we're on a long trip someplace, she'll just, you know, get that going through by Bluetooth or whatever way to, through the car stereo, or car, car system, or a little, you know, one of those speakers, Bose speakers, something like that. And it's great to be listening, and they have all genres across the board. So sometimes I'll get to listen to ones that aren't as interesting as others, but it's a good, it's a good deal, and all free.
Yeah, and thanks for mentioning that. We do have a lot of the audiobooks collection that are on the Overdrive. And I actually listen to the audiobooks on the way, and when you are on the long commute. It's wonderful. And you can finish a book probably in one week, just listening to on the way you go to work and go back to home.
Could you just go ahead and repeat again when you expect the library to open?
Next year, January 2022.
Okay.
And I will give you the, I don't have a form date yet, but I will give you update as soon as I have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards that have been turned in.
Would somebody like to speak other than having turned in a card?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I watched the Zoom meeting tonight from Metro, and then I was one of the three or four people that had called in before I had to leave and wanted to come to see the sheriff. What's happened in the past with Amanda Lee, I have to say something. Yes, I am a commissioner. But when I called in, I identified myself by name, 42-year resident, and gave my opinion, which I'm allowed to do under the First Amendment, about what I thought should happen to move it to the park and ride from our existing parking, gave my reasons, and that's all I said. At no time, and thank God, they recorded this. So you can go back and listen. At no time did I make inference that I was a commissioner, speaking for that commission, but I was a 42-year resident, speaking my opinion of why the city should, pardon me, should move it to the park and ride. So she has misstated the fact, and she has done that in the past. But I had to call her on it, because I didn't want that opinion to be out there that I had done that. And that is my word. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, Margie Green here. I'm here for the San Dimas Historical Society. We have a pre-walk, a pre-walking tour, which some of you have been on. This one will be a little bit different. This is a pre-walking tour of downtown San Dimas. I clocked it, and it's about 3/4 of a mile, which really isn't very long. It takes about an hour and a quarter to go through and learn a lot of history. We will also be open in the Walker House the first Saturday of every month with a tour starting at 10:00 in the morning, lasting till about 11:15. But our museum and our gift shop will be open from 10:00 to 1:00. So we hope you will stop by and visit that. This month, our walking tour is November 6, which is a really special one, because our normal walking tour person will be out of town. We have engaged our past mayor. Mayor Kurt Morris will be our walking guide. I'm sure that you can do it in an hour and 15 minutes, but with Kurt talking, I'm sure it's going to take a little bit longer, and you'll get a lot of different information because Kurt Morris has lived in town for most of his life, which has been quite a while. I can't remember the dates. But anyway, it will be a really fantastic, very different walking tour. Remember, it's all free. It starts on the veranda of the walking, the Walker House, and will last about an hour and 15 minutes. But I'm sure Kurt can keep talking for another two hours if you've got the question. We're looking forward to it, and it should be a wonderful time. And also, remember, the gift shop and museum are going to be open in the Walker House, and that is November 6, weekend after this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests a separate discussion.
Move approval?
Yeah, just one thing. I need to recuse myself from item four, which is an extension of the Pioneer Park ENA.
Second.
Hey, all opposed? All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And Councilman Ebner recuses himself on number four. Okay? We have a public hearing tonight. I'll introduce the city attorney, Jeff Malaway.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight is our fourth public hearing on the process that we're undertaking to consider transitioning from the at-large method of electing city council members to a district-based method of electing city council members. We are in the midst of this process. At this point, we thankfully have the software that's up on the sanddimasdistricts.org website for members of the public to create and submit maps through that website system for consideration by the city council, when the council is ultimately going to be the ones who will decide the map for the districts for the June 2022 election. We are asking, and we have a deadline, for the public to submit maps for the city council to consider on November 9. That deadline is November 1 for the public to submit maps on sanddimasdistricts.org that the council will then consider on November 9. We have had a public workshop on October 20 that we had a training session for the public to be able to learn how to use that software on the website to create maps and submit them to the council. We had another public workshop tonight at 5:00 PM over in the senior center for another training session. And tonight, at the, at this public hearing tonight, we have our consultant, Jeff Simonetti from National Demographics Corporation, who will go through yet another demonstration of how to use the software on sanddimasdistricts.org so that the public can submit maps. There is one map that has been submitted by a member of the public that's on the website already, but I think everyone would like to have more, so we want to encourage the public to go and submit maps by November 1. The city council will hold another public hearing on November 9 to consider the maps that have been submitted. And council can select a map that night if they choose and introduce the ordinance that night. Other than that, tonight is another public hearing to consider maps that have been posted on the city's website for at least seven days. Those are the same two maps that were considered at the last public hearing two weeks ago. We have Jeff Simonetti, our consultant, as I already mentioned, who's going to make a presentation tonight, and will open up the public hearing and take public comment. So Mr. Simonetti can take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeff Simonetti, and I'm with the National Demographics Corporation. We again appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and go through the redistricting process. And we also would like to thank the citizens that came out this afternoon to go through the community workshop. Thought we had a productive time talking through some of the maps and the mapping process. So for this evening, we'd like to talk about an overview of the, we'll be talking about three main components. We'll talk about here in the presentation, the overview of the official 2020 demographic data that we have. We'll talk a bit more about the project timelines. And then we will transition over, and I'll show you the website with, go through a quick tutorial on the online mapping tools. And then we have the two maps posted, and we have those in the format that's, that shows it on the online mapping tool, where you can see the full set of demographics and the demographic evaluation. We'll walk through those, and then you can ask for feedback from the general public related to those. As Jeff was mentioning, the reason why we can only show those, those two maps and have that for discussion at the public hearing tonight is that the laws make it very specific that when we're in the redistricting process, maps before they can be considered have to be posted at least seven days in advance. And that's also going to be driving some of the deadlines that we have here coming up, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. So, and this is also on the website, which we'll be showing, showing here momentarily. But we have the full official demographic data from the 2020 census, and this is from the California statewide database. And I want to go through a couple of different components here because you'll hear some of the, some of the different demographic names thrown around. On the upper left-hand corner here, we have the full city population. So that's, that's exactly like it sounds, the, every, every citizen within the city. On the lower left-hand side, when we talk about citizen voting age population, that is any citizen within the city who is over 18 years of age. So it doesn't mean that you have to be registered to vote. It's anyone who is over the age of 18 and is a citizen within the city. On the right-hand side, you'll see the voting statistics. So this is the voter registration for the November of 2020 election, and then on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see the voter turnout. And as you can see, if you make a comparison between the citizen voting age population and then the total voter registration, you guys have a very high percentage of registered voters within the city. When we get into the demographics on the website, and we'll walk through again a quick tutorial, and we'll also show you this on the maps. One of the things that is important to consider when you're looking at, at the maps and potentially drawing maps is your citizen voting age population. And these are the updated demographic maps for a couple of different ones. So here we have the Latino citizen voting age population. And you can see that particularly within the, the center part of the city, there are some concentrations of Latino citizen voting age population. Here is the Asian-American citizen voting age population. And I should, I should mention too, that for each one of these maps, the purple and blue color is the lower percentages, and the orange and reddish color represents higher percentages for a particular demographic. And here you have your African-American citizen voting age population. For the rest of the time for our redistricting process, we have a compressed time schedule. And the reason why we have a compressed time schedule here is, as you know, in most instances in the past, we've had March elections. You're on the, March, March election for even numbered years. Because of the delays in the census data, there was a bill passed, Senate Bill 594, which moved the elections, and we discussed this at, I believe, our second public hearing, that moved the elections from March to June. So you'll be, there'll be, the, the election will actually take place at the same time as the June primary. Because of that, any elections that were taking, would have taken place either in March or June, has to have their map, and it's submitted to the LA County Register of Voters by no later than December 9. So that's driving the, the laws here, what's driving the compressed time schedule that we have here. So let's walk through the, the rest of the timeline. So this evening, we had our community workshop at 5 o'clock. We're having our fourth public hearing tonight. November 1 will be the deadline for the public to submit maps. And the reason why we have that deadline is, as Jeff was mentioning earlier, for the city council to consider maps at the November 9 hearing, those need to be posted for at least seven days prior to the hearing. So November 1 will give us time to post those onto the website. We'll, we'll get those posted, and then we'll have a hearing on November 9. This will be a hearing where we will consider the draft maps, and if that's, if that's, if there's no changes to the map that you have, you can begin the ordinance introduction for the council to adopt that district map. If the council needs further time, or there's, there's disagreement as to which, which map you would like to choose, we have a tentative date of November 15 for another public hearing to select the map and introduce the ordinance. Then the final ordinance adoption hearing will be on November 23. Then the final ordinance adoption hearing will be on November 23rd. So for the remainder of tonight's public, for the council meeting, we'll be discussing the draft maps and seeking feedback from the council on them, and we'll also walk through the website here to show you where the, both the draft maps are posted and how you can get onto the District R website. So I'll stop here, and are there any questions on the presentation?
Questions?
Hearing none? Hearing none? Okay, can everybody hear me? Perfect. Okay, so for the remainder of the hearing, we're gonna go through two things. First, I want to show you where everything is on the website, show you how to quickly use the District R mapping tool, and then we will walk through the draft maps that we have, and then we can seek public input at that point. So, the website, if you are interested in seeing the schedule, or drawing a map, or seeing the draft maps, is sandemusdistrices.org. And so when you come here, you'll see the welcome page here, and about halfway down, you'll see mapping tools are available, and click here for the city's District R online mapping tool. That will take you to that, to the online mapping tool. We'll show you that in a minute. The schedule will show you here where you have your agendas, your links, and will show you the remaining, the public hearings. And you'll also, if you want to see the draft maps, they are posted here under the draft maps tab, and you'll see we have the PDFs, and those are what we will be able to publish in the agenda, but for each draft map, I have created those in a District R link so that you can see an apples-to-apples comparison for the, so for example, the ones that we've drawn are in a District R format, and we'll go through those in a moment. First things first, let me show you just a quick tutorial on the online mapping tool. So when you go to the District R website, the first thing that you'll come to is the opening page here. You'll see three components. The first one is start drawing. So the purple block here is if you want to draw a draft map, you'll click on that, and we'll go there in a moment. Or if you want to identify a community of interest, you'll click on that orangish reddish block, and then that will allow you to draw a community of interest, and that can be submitted as well. There are two components here. The first one is called the public gallery, and so when an online map gets fully submitted and is complete, it will show up here, and we have the two draft maps that we've posted, as well as one from the general public. Let's say you have gone through and you haven't completed it, or you want to go back at a later time, those maps will show up as works in progress, and if you click here on the load drafts, that will show you where the draft plans are. And if you stop halfway and say, I want to complete it at a later time, you just click on your map, and that will be able to, you'll be able to complete it at that point. But let's go up and show you how to draw a map. So when you go to this page, you'll get to the map of Sandemus, and there are a couple of important components here. So the first one is what we call the data layer. Okay? So you'll be able to see both your demographic data, so if you go to the pulldown tab here, you'll be able to see either your total population or your voting age population, and you'll see that when you click on that, it will give you a shaded region for a particular concentration, and this is done by census block. So let's say, for example, you want to see the Hispanic citizen voting age population, you'll click on that, and you'll see the different percentages by census block, and this is the exact same information that you have, that I showed you on the presentation earlier. Okay? Let's toggle that off for a moment. You can also see the additional demographics that comes from the American Communities Survey here. So if you click on this, and for example, you want to see children at home, percentage of children at home, or you want to see your income statistics, that will show you there. And you can get all of those, and we encourage you to take a look at those if there's a particular demographic or a particular characteristic you want to see. You can leave that toggled on, and that will stay under the map as you're drawing, so you don't have to guess where your particular demographic of interest is. So let's go back to the population tab, and this will begin the drawing. So there are a couple of tools here. We'll get into those in a second, but the important thing to remember is, when we talked at the beginning about population balance, and that's one of the key driving factors of the Federal Voting Rights Act, is having a no greater than 10% deviation from the population of the smallest district to the largest district. You'll see here two things that will help you determine that. The first one is the ideal, so, and that's just simply a mathematical equation for, you have a total population of the city, which is 35,020, divide that by the number of districts which we're drawing, which is four, and that's how you get to 8755. The districts do not have to be exactly 8755, it has to be within that 10% range. And you'll see here, where we have the maximum population deviation, that will change as you start drawing the districts. So let's start drawing a district, and I'll show you how this works. So let's say, for example, you want to start here in the southwest corner of the city, in Villa Verde. You have your pointer tool, which is on the left here, the pointing finger, and that will let you zoom into, or point to a particular area and either zoom in or out. To begin drawing your map, you'll click on the paint, and each one of these colors corresponds to a district number. So you'll see, blue is one, yellow is two, this light green is three, and sort of the olive color is four. So let's start on one. And when you'll see, when you hover over the area, that will correspond to the areas that you're going to add into that district. Okay? So now you can either click by whichever census block you want to go over, or if you hold your mouse down and drag over the census blocks, that will add any area in that you hover over while you hold it down. Okay? And as you can see here, you know, as we add population, it automatically adds your, to the population. You can see it's filling in that, in the population balance down here. Okay, so now we're adding. Now let's say, okay, I've added too much, and there's some areas here that I don't, that I want to take out. So we'll go back to the area, let's say I want to take this area out. The third one here is the erase tool, and does the exact opposite of what we just did. So here, if you again click on a particular census block, it'll take it out, and again, you can hover over, and anything that you hover over, it will remove. Okay, so that's a generally population-balanced district. Let's add in. And I'm not going to fill in a full one, but I just want to show you a couple of other important components of the tool here, so that you can see. So let's say, this is going to be my second district. This is going to be my third district. And this is going to be the basis of my fourth district. And again, you'll see that the population continues to add. Okay, so there are a couple of important items here. You'll see here, this checkmark where it says highlight unassigned units. When you click on that, it will show in red the census blocks that you have not added to a particular area of population. And so let's, for example, zoom in here. You'll see with the way that the US Census Bureau draws their census blocks, there are some that are like this, is on arrow highway, which is extremely thin here, so you can see. There's no population in there, but it's still considered a census block, it's just arrow highway. It's very easy to go over those and miss, but if you click on the highlight unsigned areas, that will show you where those are. Let's say you want to add that into the, you want to add that census block into the blue district, you'll click on whatever district you want to add that census block into, hover over it, and now you'll see it gets added to the blue district. And you'll, and make sure that when you, that every area of the city is assigned to a particular district, and particularly down here, for example, some of the freeway, so for example, this is the 10 freeway, you'll see there's a couple of very, very thin census blocks that are super easy to miss, but that's a useful tool to help you. So now let's say, for sake of argument, this is the map that you want to see, and this is what you're considering submitting. The last thing to look at is your evaluation tab. And this will show you your demographic statistics for each one of the districts in the manner that you have drawn. And so you can use these, the pulldown tabs to compare the populations from each one, but it defaults, you either have your total population by race and your voting age population by race, and you can see your specific demographic breakdowns from there. Now let's say you're finally ready, you've got your map ready to go, the last thing that you'll do is go up and click save. And there'll be a couple of components here. The first thing is, you can either share it now, and you'll add your team or plan name, and that will submit the map plan. Let's say you don't want to, you haven't completed it yet, or you want to keep thinking about it, click on work in progress, and that'll save it to the draft. And remember your number, so each map has a five-digit, a unique five-digit number, so for example, this one is 70687. If you're going to share, if you're either, you want to go back and see your map, or if you have a work in progress, remember that five-digit number, and that will show up on the main screen that we initially went to. So with that, that's a quick overview of how the mapping tool works. So before we get into the draft maps on District R, are there any questions on functionality or questions that you have about how District R works?
Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I had one question, and that's about the work in progress maps. So we saw in, yeah, two, well now, three work in progress maps on the Sandemus districting part of this. Or, well, maybe you have two, it looks like the one you just did that didn't show up now.
Yeah, because I didn't save it.
Oh, you didn't save it? Okay, great, great, great. So here's a couple draft or work in progress maps, and I know you can pick one of those and look at it, right? Can somebody other than the author of that map edit that map?
Yes, they can, because they are, it's all, it's all part of the public record, but if, for example, you go here, you can lock your data layers, and so if you go to, oops, if you go to your paint tool here, you can lock your already drawn districts.
Okay.
And so, and the other thing that we do too is, once the maps are submitted, I will make a PDF of that so that we know exactly where the districts lines were drawn, and so for example, if someone were to go in and change those, we'd have that PDF and know, and we can get back to that, if for some reason there were changes made.
So let me be clear on that. So I saw the lock already drawn districts when I was playing with this. And so if you click that, and you either save it as a work in progress, or you submit it, are those districts locked for that particular identified map, the five-digit identified map?
Yes, as long as, yes, as long as someone doesn't go in and change though, take that off.
So I'm thinking, that's interesting. So I'm thinking that everybody in Sandemus is probably trustworthy, and nobody's going to try to mess with anybody's map, including the maps that you've made, and add or take out some little census blocks here and there, but it is possible for, if I'm doing a map and I just, I'm getting tired, it's 1:00 in the morning, I want to take it up in the morning, if somebody else is up at 3:00 in the morning and goes in and starts changing the map, and I go back and I may not notice that, or whatever, what's my recourse? How are, and I'm sure you're not looking every second to see if something's submitted, and you do a PDF like right then, so what's the safeguard against these maps being changed?
It, again, yes, it's not something that we're looking at instantaneously, but, and I would hope that people wouldn't go in and change other people's maps. We can, I can go back to District R and see if there's something that we can do to just save that without making draft changes, but I will, like I said, I look at these at least a couple of times a day, and I will make sure that, like I said, to immediately make a download of that and make a PDF so we know what the filing at the time that I review it would be.
Well, and the PDF then does not have any of the data that you're, that is so valuable in this tool here.
No, it doesn't, but what we can do is, if you have that PDF, you can still see how that, how the districts were drawn, and if, for some reason, someone went in and changed that, if you have the PDF and know exactly how it was, you can go back and redraw it.
Okay. And lastly, just about in that same thing, I'm trying to remember, did I, I thought I might have seen like a historic where you could see saved versions, is that not the case, am I thinking of something else? I thought there might have been a thing where you could see the saved versions over time, so if somebody did save it as a work in progress three times, you could upload or load that particular iteration of that map. Is that not the case?
Yeah, so.
I'm thinking of some other software.
It might be some other software. So in this instance, when you save a map, you either save it in, as work in progress, or you save it as a submitted plan. So we'll only go into one of the two.
And we're sure that the submitted plan is not solid. It could literally be changed. I could go out there tonight and modify one of the.
No, so that's what I wanted to make clear. If a plan has been submitted, it cannot be changed, right? It's only the works in progress that could be changed.
Yes.
Okay.
That's good to know, at least.
So did you want to go on to the maps?
Are there other questions about?
So I guess just to clarify, so that people out there know what they're going to need to do if they have a work in progress, if they click that box, they should be pretty much squared away until they submit it, at which time the map has been submitted, it's finalized, it can be changed?
Yes, work in progress can be changed.
I heard something different than that earlier, so I just want to be clear on that. I think you said that a person could go in, pull up that map, uncheck the lock bound, lock, whatever that terminology was, uncheck the lock already drawn districts. lock, whatever that terminology was, uncheck the lock already drawn districts, and then go ahead and edit the map.
On Works in Progress.
So Eric, I think that was your question. A Work in Progress, it's not safe, even if you have checked the.
Right, yeah.
So I think the lesson is, to be safe and foolproof, create your map, and when you're happy with it, submit it. And it might not be the best idea to use the Work in Progress tool, because people could go in and change those. But if you create a map, you're happy with it, and then you submit it, then it will be submitted, and it can't be changed.
And it just, I'm sorry, I'm just remembering things from my past life. So in the medical field, you've got a patient you're working on, and either the entire patient is locked when somebody's adding it, or maybe it's part of it, maybe the insurance information, or the next of kin, or whatever. When somebody's actually in there, and they've got it up on their screen, and they're editing, can somebody else go into the Work in Progress and start messing with it at that point? So can two people be working on the same map at the same time?
At the same time? I can ask District R, I don't know the answer to that question. I can ask.
I mean, generally, you would lock it in a different kind of lock, but a lock on it. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So let's go to the two draft maps. So this will again show the two draft maps that we had originally considered back on October 12th. So.
And what number is this one?
This is Plan 101, so we'll start out with Draft Map 101. So what we had, the original idea here was that Villa Verde was potentially identified as a community of interest, that should be kept together. For the purposes of population, and to have a balanced map, Villa Verde can't stand on its own and have, not issues with population deviation. So you have to capture population from somewhere else. So the two maps are iterations on that theme, and keeping parts of San Dimas downtown together as well. So in Map 101, start with Villa Verde, and we take the areas to the north and west to add those to have a, to make that population balanced. For the orange district, we have Pudding Stone Reservoir, and tried to keep the eastern portion of the San Dimas downtown here together. The dividing line here, as you can see, and I'll zoom in, is San Dimas Avenue. Okay? And then the remaining two districts would be the western portion of the downtown, and then the area to the west of the 57. And then your area in the northern part of the city would be your final district. Let's go back to Plan, and here are your demographics for each one of those districts. So as you can see, in particular, the light greenish district would have a majority, or plurality of Hispanic population, as well as, I believe, yes, with the, with your citizen voting age population as well. So that's Plan 101. For Plan 102, we took a different approach to Villa Verde. Again, you have to add population to Villa Verde as the community of interest, because it doesn't have enough on its own to be its own district. So instead of going up to the north and connecting this area with Villa Verde, we went to the east and added Villa Verde with the population areas around Pudding Stone Reservoir. So the demarcating line here again is San Dimas Avenue. This time, we made just more of a north-south district here for the downtown. This is where most of the high concentration of population is. So this is the smallest geographic district, but it has, you know, pretty significant population there. So we tried to keep the eastern half of the downtown and the areas to the north of that together. Again, the demarcating line here is San Dimas Avenue. And then the west, or south of Arrow Highway, and then the areas to the west, including the areas that kind of wrap around the county pocket here, would be your third district. And then your fourth district would be the western half of the downtown area, and then going up into the north part of the city. Go to your evaluation numbers, you can see here that, again, your, the District 3, which is the light green district, has approximately 40.2% Hispanic population. Then you can see the rest of your breakdowns here. Let me show you also where these are, again, posted on the website, so for the public who would like to view these. Go back to sanddimasdistricts.org. If you go to the Draft Maps tab, and then everything will be listed here by number. And one thing that I want to mention, when we get submissions from the city, or excuse me, from the public, in the public gallery, so for example, here, the BJ Lamb's District Version 5. Just for purposes of continuity, so we're making sure that we're numbering these all together, we'll put these in numerical order. So this map will become 103, but I'll put a label on there with the ID number and the name, so that we know what it corresponds to on District R. But just for numbering, so we make sure that when we're looking at maps, and let's say we have 10 or 15 maps, we have a numerical and uniform way of labeling these districts, so that we can go back. If you say, all right, I want to go back and see 107, we know 107 is always going to be 107. But I'll make sure that we label those with both the name and the ID number, so that you know what it corresponds to on District R. And with that, happy to answer any questions about either one of the draft maps.
I have one more technical question. Could you bring up either one of those, 101 or 102?
Sure.
Just want to. Okay, can you try to click on the eraser? Can you erase something on the map? Can you go over there and see what happens? Get on, just go to the map.
If it's locked, it won't.
Well, just try it. I just like to see, drag the pointer over to a colored area, and then, okay, and then click.
Yeah, it's not doing it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry. Another thing I just want to make clear before we end the staff report is, that these two maps are just maps that our consultant has come up with. As someone who doesn't live in the city, someone who is just looking at the numbers and looking at the map, what we really need are maps from the public. We need the public to go into this system, submit maps, draw their own maps, and submit them, so that the council can have maps to consider on November 9th. And the deadline for the public to do that, again, is November 1st.
Any additional questions of the consultant?
Is there any way for members of the public, or us, for that matter, to be able to compare two maps directly at the same time? Being able to contrast them and say, these are the particular districts that are not in alignment? Because I've noticed that there's, since San Dimas is a very oddly shaped city, most of the maps are probably going to be very similar, and it might be difficult for people just with little tiny census blocks, being different from one map to the next, potentially, to compare and contrast them and say that this is the difference between this map and this map. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think probably the best way to do that would be, and it's something that will, once we start getting maps in place, we will group those by theme. So in a lot of instances, you'll see where, when maps get submitted, you know, they'll have a particular theme. So maybe it's north-south districts, or, you know, one in the south, two in the middle, one in the north, something like that. We, as part of the presentation moving forward, will group all of those together by a particular theme, and then that will help you to see, there might be small differences between them, and then you can kind of make that differentiation from there.
Okay, thanks.
Can there be a table or a spreadsheet showing the various factors? And I know there's a lot, because you showed us the different kinds of demographics you can switch, but there are some major ones that we might want to take into consideration. Can there be a table that would say, you know, here's, down one side, it would be all those Hispanic, white, whatever, some of those kinds of things? And then, you know, Map 101, Map 102, Map 103, and the percentages in those columns, so we can actually see them side by side? I like the idea of grouping them by theme, as you're saying, but just as Eric said, some of those are going to have these very small differences. Somebody might go over a block or something from Walnut to Delancey, or something like that. And you can see the difference, obviously, in how it's shaped, but you don't know what effect that has on those factors that you're trying to, trying to take into consideration.
Yeah, so what we can do is, if you'd like, and this was something, so at the community workshop, for example, when we printed out these maps, we had each one of these tables in the evaluation layer printed out, and we can certainly, if you want, you know, as we get these submitted, we can add those as images.
Not, that's probably good enough.
All right, any additional questions? We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come to the podium.
David Estrada is the first speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I attended the workshop this afternoon, and I want to thank Mr. Semenetti, and of course, Mr. Malawi for being there and answering all of our questions and walking us through it. It was extremely informative and important, and I appreciate it. So I've got two concerns. One has to do with whether or not we've met our statutory obligation on publishing the first two maps. And my other concern is the shortness of time that the public is being given to draw their own maps. As you were seeing today for the first time, Maps 101 and 102, for the first time today, we were able to see the demographic breakouts. Now, these maps have been published in PDF form for about three weeks now, and none of us have seen this detail until today. So that's unfortunate. And having that statutory obligation of seven days in advance, I don't know that we've met that, but we can set that aside, because what I wanted to do was be able to see what 101 and 102 had, population-wise, voter registration, minority voters, and I wasn't, and I still haven't done it, because I was here. So tonight, I'm going to sit down and do that. I'm going to do my best to submit a map the best I can by the deadline. So I guess, I appreciate the questions you had, because they were practically identical questions I had. I do want to say that the staff has been extremely supportive and helpful, and you can't blame them for doing the best they can with the limited time that they've had. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, that's the only speaker card that's been turned in for this item.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council concerning this matter?
Good evening. The one question that I have concern about involves sequencing, which I was, I learned the vocabulary at the other meeting. And I'm wondering if, oh, I'm sorry, and I'm wondering if there is a way around the dates that are set out for reelection, because.
Name, please.
My name is Karen.
Thank you.
Sure. Is, okay, sorry, I got distracted. Is there a way to get around the election dates that, based on what district you're in, that honors the current dates at which council members are up for reelection? To avoid a situation where you have one member who comes up for election two years before they're supposed to at this current date, and another might get an extra two years in office without having to be reelected? And to me, that seems like a pretty important thing to honor, since everyone in the city voted in the election, or everyone who did vote in the election, you know, the results were as they are now. But with changing to districts, there's a chance that one member could lose his, you know, he would have to come up for election where normally he wouldn't have to, you know, until two years, where another gets to stay in. So I'd really appreciate if you guys could have a conversation about that, and also give some legal advice about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city attorney will address that matter Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter in front of the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from council? Or Jeff, would you?
Yes, thanks. If I could just address that issue about sequencing. I did, in the staff report for this item, on page two and three, I did include some more detailed information about the election sequencing, and how the terms of the council members will work. And no, no council member, no matter what happens, no council member is going to be forced to end their four-year term early, and no council member is going to be given additional years or time on their term, just because we're going to districts. It's explained in the staff report, but essentially, we're going to have four districts, and the council will have to decide which two of those districts are going to be up in 2022. We have two council members who are up in 2022. It's Councilmember Vienna and Councilmember Bertone. So the two districts that are up in 2022 will replace those two seats. If Councilmember Bertone doesn't live in one of those districts, then he won't be able to run in 2022, and he'll just be off the council. But that's how it will work. The two that are up, the two districts that are up in 2022 will replace Councilmember Vienna's seat and Councilmember Bertone's seat. Councilmember Ebner and Councilmember Weber are up for reelection in 2024, so they will stay in their seats until 2024. And the two districts that the council selects to have an election in 2024 will go to an election in 2024 and replace those two seats, starting in 2024. If council member, let's just. If Councilmember, let's just say Councilmember Weber, happens to live in a district that is up in 2022, Councilmember Weber can decide to run in that election in 2022, or he could decide to just stay in his seat until 2024. If he wins the election in 2022, then he will take one of Dennis or Ryan's seats, and then his seat will become vacant. And the council will need to appoint someone or call a special election for someone to serve out the remainder of Councilmember Weber's existing term that lasts until 2024. That's the way it works. It's explained, I think, a little bit more simply in the staff report, but I can answer questions about that if you'd like. But it is in the staff report for the public's ability to read it. So, that's.
Thank you. Any questions of the city attorney? Any other questions concerning this matter?
You know, it's not a question, but when you look at the map of San Dimas, it almost makes the districts for you, because you're not going to cut up the northern foothills into several districts, or you're not going to cut Villa Verde into several districts. And even this map right here, the vast majority of Villa Verde lives in the blue area. The yellow area or gold area is actually very few people live in that part of it. So logic has to go into making these districts, I think.
Right. And we'll see, yes.
Has the public hearing been closed?
We'll close the public hearing. All right. I heard you. Okay, anybody else like to have something to say?
I, I'm not going to comment on any specific map until we see all of the maps that get submitted for consideration, but I hear what Dennis is saying, and I think the, you know, looking at the maps to be contiguous and make sense, I think, is important, being mindful of all the different features in the community. To that end, I know we didn't get the demographic data up on the 15th, but the 21st works, and I know you got that up there, so thank you for that. I do share the concern of members of the community in terms of the timing. I obviously wasn't a fan of holding the public hearing tonight for this, but the city meets its legal requirement for having a fourth public hearing, but, you know, for what? I mean, ultimately, we still need to see those maps from the community. So I look forward to getting those maps from the community, and I'm glad this tool is up and running now for them to be able to do that. And as I understand it, did we calendar November 15th? Is that going to be the meeting in the end for this?
So, if I may, Councilmember Vienna, so November 9th will be the public hearing to potentially introduce the ordinance. That will be at least seven days after the deadline for the submittal of draft maps. The ordinance has to be specific with a, two things. The map that you're going to choose, and, as we were discussing most recently, the sequence of the elections. It has to be introduced specifically as that. So let's say, for example, we go through November 9th, and there's disagreement, or you say, "I like map XYZ, but I want you to do," you give us direction, you know, "I want you to make a couple of changes here." Because that map has to be specifically associated with that, we would have to go back and make changes to that. So that's the reason why we have the 15th associated with potentially making those changes.
So there's cushion built into the timeline at this point. So, okay, all right. So, thank you, Deborah. Thanks for coordinating all that. But I do share the sentiment of the community that, you know, I think we're down to the wire. I'm glad we have an extra meeting in there. I think, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I, to be frank, I appreciate the walkthrough of these maps, but I haven't considered anything, because I don't intend to consider them until we consider them all at once. So that's my intent, and that's my thought process. So I'm with Mr. Estrada that, you know, it's great to see this, but really need time to chew on it and interpret it and understand it.
All right, anyone else sitting? John?
No, but with that comment, it's kind of, I don't know, it's partly fun, but it's partly, I think, helps the, kind of, thinking about it over a little period of time. So when you go in there and you start doing the maps, and especially if you have the evaluation tab open, you see those numbers change, and it's almost like a, I'm going to call it a game, but you've got a goal in mind. And the goal is to get some percentages higher in a certain district. And you can, it's just interesting when you pick different census blocks to see that inch upward or drop precipitously, it's like, oh, my gosh, what did I do? So, you know, this one here is actually a pretty, that district, just as one factor, I'm not saying other factors, but District 3 here has Hispanic at 44.3. I was hard-pressed to get to 45, personally, but I only was doing it for two or three hours. But, you know, it is a challenge, and it's a nice challenge to have, actually, to try to achieve our goals.
Super, the recommendation, Jeff?
It's just a receive-and-file item. We'll be back on, at the next meeting, November 9th.
All right, any problem with receiving and filing? Okay, we'll move on. Oral communications, members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes, or as may be determined by the chair. Is there anyone like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go to Brad.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to have Public Works Director Sherry Garwick come up and give a brief update on the Gold Line.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Sherry Garwick, Director of Public Works. There's a considerable amount of activity on, construction activity on the Gold Line corridor. They're primarily, we have the bridge activity, they're constructing the bridge abutments at Benita and Cataract. And then there's, throughout the rest of the corridor, they're doing grading work and drainage work. Right now, Walnut Avenue is still closed between Benita and Arrow Highway. That's slated to remain closed through the middle of November. Upon, when that reopens, then the next crossing closure is scheduled to be San Dimas Canyon Road. So, also, earlier this evening, we had a scope, or the Gold Line had a scoping meeting for a potential supplemental environmental impact report that's being done for the potential relocation of the station parking from the Walnut side of San Dimas Avenue to the east, to the west side of San Dimas Avenue, at the city's parking lot. Residents can still comment on this by going on to the city's website. There's information on that website, and then there's, or they can go to the footholdgoldline.org website and make their comments there. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
City Attorney?
I wanted to remind you, Mayor, that we, I don't think we did the second oral communications. Did we do that?
That's what we're just doing.
Okay, sorry, I was spacing. I have no reports from the city attorney.
Members of the City Council, Councilmen reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency. Seeing none. Councilman Bertone?
Yes, this past weekend, I was, as many of you attended the Spooktacular, which was the San Dimas Halloween, and the Parks Department did a fantastic job, I think, and it was really great. The candy on Elm Street was my favorite, because I got to eat a lot of candy, and they had the haunted house, and that was full, and it was really spooky. And the costume contest was also very interesting. That was lots of fun. I understand that there's an organization called Californians for Community Planning, which has financial support, that's started an initiative process for SB 9. And I understand they're quite well-financed, and they're going to try to get it on the November 7th, 2022 ballot. And that's the housing initiative that really takes away the ability of the city to do this planning. And supposedly, this organization has financial backing. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Councilman Vienna?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, there were comments made as it was related to commissioner training. I would like to see what we can do about that. I know we talked about doing that on an annual basis, and so see if we can dust that off. But to that point, I do recall the conversation, and, you know, I appreciate Mr. Olander coming up and clarifying what transpired there. And I do believe, as stated, is absolutely consistent with what the spirit was as it related to that particular section and being clear, related to when someone professes to be a representative or minces words, so that they could be speaking in their role or capacity as a city official versus an individual member of the public. So I thought about that tonight, because I thought about going to the meeting as it related to parking for the Gold Line, because I can't comment on that, because I, as a council member, because I live in that affected area. But I could comment on it, as I found out, as a member of the public, and I could comment on it as a representative of my homeowners' association. So I think it is important that everybody's mindful of the hats and the roles that they play when they are affiliated with a lot of different organizations in the community. So I appreciate everyone's diligence and mindfulness, because I think people should be raising their voices. And the one thing we definitely have here in town is a lot of people active in a lot of different things in a lot of different ways. So, you know, thank you for that. The Halloween Spooktacular was awesome. I hand my hats off to staff, great job. Parks and Recreation, I think everyone did an outstanding job Friday. And, you know, Deborah and staff, I had the opportunity to go through the haunted Stanley Plumber Building, and that was really interesting, watching the youth, you know, in the Sheriff's Department out there with everyone, really embodying, I think, you know, community engagement and, you know, bringing the community together to do some really cool things. So, well done. They got me at least once walking through there. I know my wife had a lot of fun going through there, too. And then on Saturday, Councilman Weber took me up on my little challenge to him to run the 5K. He was like a gazelle, and so he placed in our category, we're the same age, but I told him, you know, there's probably only five people in the category anyway, so not to get too crazy. But congratulations, Eric, you did really good. And I would like to say, though, I came in second in the city council category, and I held my head high with that. Thank you. Yeah, I know there's a medal around here somewhere. But nevertheless, it was a really good event. I think the community turned out pretty well. A lot of local organizations came out that day. It started drizzling at some point near the end of the day, but the toddler trot was pretty cool, seeing all those young kids out there, running their little hearts out around the track. So, a lot of cool outfits. The San Dimas Fit Body Boot Camp, Christopher Torres dressed up as Forrest Gump, and it was a great costume, and he actually placed first in his category. And that whole family actually placed, mother, father, and son. So, quite the fitness-oriented group. But nevertheless, I think staff did a great job. Everybody taking your kids trick-or-treating this weekend, be mindful, you know, wear reflective clothing, bring your flashlights, be mindful of all the candy tips. You can get those from the fire department or the sheriff's department as we get closer. And have a safe and happy Halloween, and don't drink and drive. Thanks.
Mayor, I wanted to speak to the commissioner training. Wanted council and the public to know that staff is working on that training. Myself and the city manager are trying to put together a program, so we have not forgotten about it.
Okay. Eric?
I don't want to reiterate a whole bunch of stuff, so I'll just say, the 5K was fantastic. I really enjoyed it. I'm glad Ryan pushed me to go do that. I will agree that I am not the fastest person in the world, and there's, you know, with the right community participation, it would be very easy to unseat me next year. I hope to do better than I did this year, but I think I might not be standing on any podiums next year. That same day, we had a lot going on, one of which being the penalty box. Yeah, I spent some time in a penalty box, but that was at the Rotary, the Masonic Lodge, and Diamond Bar Women's Club fundraiser for Making Spirits Bright, which is a fundraiser to buy presents for children stationed at 29 Palms Marine Corps Base. And if anybody's been to 29 Palms before, it is in the middle of nowhere. And these poor kids probably don't get the same experience of growing up that many other kids do around San Dimas. So the idea was to raise a bunch of money to buy presents for them and bring them a Christmas experience that they can remember. So it's a very worthy cause. I'm a part of a veterans hockey team that raises money through charity hockey games to fund different veterans' causes, and this being one of them. And we partnered up, played LEPD, and I will say that unfortunately, this was the first time that we've played LEPD in a charity game and lost to them. But, you know, things happen. I think we can probably spring back from this. And I did, on my very first shift out on the ice, I took a penalty for roughing. I don't know how that happened. I never get in trouble out on the ice, but I did that time. But it made for a good picture, and it's posted on my Facebook page, if anybody's interested. But it was a great time, and I really thank everybody in the community for coming out. The turnout was fantastic, and I think, I think the Rotary and Masonic Lodge are very pleased with the result of that. And as to the Spooktacular, my son, being six years old, thinks he's the bravest person in the world, led the way right into that haunted house, and within the first two rooms, he was hopped up in my wife's arms, saying, "I want to get out of here, I want to get out of here." So it works. It was a good time. I think it was really well put together, so thank you, everybody, for that.
John?
All right, well, yeah, I watched Eric and Ryan start and finish the race. I'll say one thing, they were both cheerful at the end of the race, which is saying something after running all that way. But, so, congratulations to you guys and everybody else who ran in that race. It was a different venue this year, but a really good event, and thanks to Parks and Rec for the entire weekend. I mean, it was great outside, looked fantastic, sounded fantastic. So, yeah, the department and the city did a great job on that. There were comments about input, and, you know, people making comments at, to public hearings or public comments, and I always say, the more input from, the more people, the better. So I'll just leave it at that. That's, it's good to hear different sides of everything, and that way you can tell a little bit what the community really thinks, if you hear more people speaking. So I always like having more. I'm going to iterate that website for the mapping, because the district maps is important. It's sanddimasdistricts.org. There's also a link on my webpage, so right on the homepage, I put that up there. So if you just want to go to johnebeter.com, it's easier for me to remember, anyway, and you can click on that and a number of things. Lastly, you know, do we have, with this public hearing and other public hearings, this is kind of a question to staff, and I've asked this before, but I'm, and maybe I forgot the answer, so it just occurred to me. So the, there's supposed to be a public record, if I'm not mistaken, of the people who speak at a public hearing. And I'm trying to, since we're now approving action minutes, and it does not include the names of any speakers on anything... and it does not include the names of any speakers on anything, including council members, but the public does not have their names or comments or anything memorialized in the minutes, where is it that the public could see on the district voting thing, on the, yeah, whatever, any, anything that comes up? Where can they go to see who spoke and what they said?
We can add that to the action minutes, but all, what you're going to see is the names of the individuals who spoke, and it will read "spoke" in support of or in opposition to. There, there won't be detailed comments on what they made or what they said.
Okay, and, and, I mean, that's a discussion, the detailed comments is another discussion we might have some other time, but, um, I'm thinking that, isn't there, isn't it supposed to be a public record, and, aside from going to the video and trying to find out?
That will be the public record. The, the, the action minutes is the public record that will show the, their names that they spoke on the topic, in, in support or in opposition to. The public record reflects their, again, um, support or opposition, not the individual specific comments made.
If they voluntarily gave their names.
If they gave their name.
If they did not, if they chose not to give their name, then, uh, obviously the name won't be on the minutes, and...
And, and, and they, it showed, the way the minutes were reflected will be Speaker Number One and their name if they gave it. If not, it would just be identified as Speaker Number One or Number Two.
Okay, that, that's definitely a start, and, um, we approved minutes today, there were action minutes, and there was a public hearing about the districting at our last meeting, and there were no names or speakers on there, so, I'm trying to think, are we going to start doing that, or are we going to go back and do it, or, or how's that going to work?
We, going forward, we will, the new, the minutes will reflect that, we can go back to and amend the prior minutes with, from when we started action minutes.
Okay.
And add those to them, and then bring them forward if you don't want to see them.
All right, and I'm, I'm not trying to give direction, I'm just asking, so are we actually going to be, that we, that's a plan to do that, then?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, thank you very much.
John? I, too, started and finished the race. I stood in the same place and started the race, and I stood in the same place and when they finished the race. I just didn't move more than six inches.
This is the least tired of all, all of them, I think.
Yes, so, but, but I was there, and I did watch Ryan try to kick Eric's, but he didn't quite, he fell a little short. There was, it was good, it was good participation, I believe there were about 100 runners, and maybe a little more, uh, but it was exciting to watch the enthusiasm, is that we're back in full motion here as a community. You know, we, we obviously had some, uh, some difficulties over the last year, just like every other city in the, in the world, but we're starting to move forward, and I, I think that was really great. And one of the things we talked about was people that participated. What I really thought was good, if you watched, uh, watched, uh, the race, they had the entire Holy Name Elementary School cross-country team there, and they, they ran, and I mean, the kid was three feet tall, and went up a little bit, a little bit, but they all ran, and, and they all finished, and I thought that was pretty neat. In fact, we even had several four-legged, uh, runners, and, uh, they finished, and it was, it was pretty neat to watch. One thing I just wanted to remind folks of is that speaker cards, okay? We ask you to, to do speaker cards in, in the beginning when you come, and I do realize that sometimes you get here a little late, or something comes up and you need to address the topic, but as a general rule, could we please try to, uh, keep up the speaker card thing? It just makes it easier for the, for the city clerk to do the things that, that John's asking for. It'd be, it'd be better for her to have those, those informations, and, and as the city attorney said, if they don't want to give their name, they're not required to by, you know, by law, so we'll, we'll go from there. The other thing I just wanted to say is, is that, uh, you might have noticed that the city manager wasn't here tonight, he was unavailable, I'm sure he'll be back next week, he's got some other, or two weeks, and he'll be fine. He's just taking care of, uh, some issue that came up within the last day or so, and that was it, so... Jeff, I believe we're going to a, a closed session?
Yes, we have three closed session items tonight, and I wanted to note for the record that Councilmember Ebner will not participate in item number three because of a real property interest that he owns within 500 feet, uh, but yes, the rest of the three items will go into closed session.
All right. So you have someone who'd like to move for adjournment?
I'll move for adjournment.
Good night.